I'm so glad you're already standing. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had to wait until the clock struck 7:30. The first item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda, which is a group of items to be acted on with a single motion and vote. This agenda is designed to help provide the handling of limited routine matters by city council. I will ask if a citizen or council member wishes to have any specific item removed from the consent agenda for discussion, and at that time either the public or a council member may request it to be removed from the consent agenda prior to the council's vote. The items on tonight's consent agenda include approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of February the 9th, 2016, approval of the expenditure vouchers of February the 23rd, 2016. Does anybody wish to have either one of those items removed? Then may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda presented with an expenditure of $72,011.13.
Keel?
Aye.
Archibek?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Butler?
Yes.
Sheik?
Aye.
We have no presentations this evening. By this time would anybody in the audience like to come forward and address council? Saying nobody leave to the forefront. There are no public hearings, there's no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business, which really isn't new because we've already talked about it. The hangar sale and land lease. We're so glad to see you, Russ.
Thank you. Good night, good evening.
Want to talk football again?
Good night, I'm outta here. Okay, council, we have three hangars left, and they're all three under lease, but we'd received termination notice from one of the hangars. And we approached the hangar lessee whether or not they wanted to purchase the hangar, and they passed, and they had a sublease with three other pilots with their aircraft in the hangar. So it's been our policy that if the lessee doesn't want it, and it is a sublease situation, then rather than throwing them to the curb, we would extend the offer for first option or first refusal option to them. And they were interested, and we made an offer of $30,000. We thought that was a fair, quick sale price with knowledge that it's as-is condition. There were a few things that, maintenance items that need to be addressed, and they came back with an offer of 28. Shane Conk counted with 29.5, and they accepted that. So they do now, after the sale of the hangar, have to enter into a land lease, 40-year land lease. This will be the 10th one we've done in the last 14 months. So formally, this land, pardon me, the hangar brought in a little over 2,900 a year in rent. Now it'll be about 1,800, a little over 1,800. That 1,800 will grow over time with the factor of inflation built in, so...
And Russ, will we have to credit any of the current hangar leases?
Already done.
Okay.
She's aware of it. We haven't made out the check and sent it off until we're done here. It'll be $112, so that she will get back because of her unused portion. Her lease expired on March 9th, so between tomorrow morning and that period, it was $112 in some sense. So this will enable us to do some considerable federal and/or state grants if we were to be offered any. Right now, both those avenues are closed to us, but it would amount to a funding or a match to more than a million dollar grant, nearly $1.2 million grant from the federal government. So the funding that we're getting from this sale. So it's gonna help keep our boat afloat down at the airport. I think it's a good thing. The hangar is about 35, 36 years old, so it's showing a little age, but it's in good enough shape for what they're gonna be using it for.
Good.
That's good.
Any questions?
I have none.
Well, if there are no questions, may I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the sale of Airport Hangar N-3 and approve a 40-year land lease for Hangar N-3 to John Patton III and Lars Jorkvist. Thank you.
I was waiting for that.
I was, too.
Second.
Second.
Mike, I used to be a Viking.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Keel. Your work.
Archibek?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Butler?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
Russ, let me ask you one quick question. I hope it's not out of order. Have you heard anything from Chuck with Great Lakes? Have they heard anything?
Oh, about their extension? It should be coming down any day now, so I have not heard.
So I, you know, I did put in the last weekly update that they are gonna start in March offering a third daily flight?
Right.
Which is good. So they are kinda beefing up their offerings out of Cortez, which is great, and I think that it didn't hurt for us to make a comment on their behalf. I don't know how they make decisions, but I think that us being an advocate for them as they make the decision of where they add flights, I don't think it hurt our chances.
Historically, we've been one of their bigger communities that they served over their, what, 30 years that they've been around here? So, well, not 30, about 25 maybe. So maybe that's, I'm assuming they're trying to build up the traffic again in their larger communities that they've been serving over the years.
Yeah, certainly when we hear back from that decision, I mean, we'll let council know immediately, like if, I won't wait for a weekly update.
It will be a midnight text?
It will. I'm actually gonna go door-to-door.
Are ya? Listen, I'm holding you to the hat.
Well, me or my agent.
Yeah.
I won't be with him.
Okay, thanks, Russ. All right, Rick Network Redundancy Award.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. As many of you are aware, we've been working on a true redundancy for the government network and network in general. All of the service providers route traffic utilizing the tri-state fiber route, which goes between Grand Junction, goes by Roundup Junction, and heads over towards Durango. Cortez has served off of a spur off of that, so we're kinda on a peninsula, if you will. And this network that we're proposing would create a whole new path out of here for Cortez over to Durango and ultimately Colorado Springs and up to Denver that way, as well as it splits down and goes down to Albuquerque as well. During the budget season, we met with Skyworks, and they gave us some pricing on that, and the city and the county both budgeted for this project 50/50. We're kinda taking the lead on it as a license for the wireless spectrum will be in the city's name. Anyway, the total price of equipment and installation is $53,018. And we have already met, it was kind of a cart before the horse, we had to apply for and be granted the license before we wanted to enter into the cost for the equipment because we wanna make sure that we could, in fact, do that with the FCC license requirement. So we do have that in place at this time. And I would also add that the first hop would be on Cavernous Mountain on the, most likely the same tower that the police department recently turned up their stuff on. So we're asking for a purchase order to be issued to Skyworks for $56,918, with the county reimbursing that at $28,459.
What's the turnaround for the county reimbursing the city, right? Is that usually, does it come in, is it entered into the contract where after so much of this is complete, they'll...
They've been pretty good. It's normally just an email from me to Melissa with an invoice, and they, it's never been an issue.
Right, okay. Yeah, I didn't figure it was.
So we'll probably with this one because, like, Jim McLean has been pretty involved. We'll probably forward it through their department and let him push it through, but it's usually a week or two. It's pretty quick.
And I have confirmed, it is in the county 2016 budget as well as ours, so...
I have no other questions.
All right, anybody else? Then may I have a motion?
Honorable Mayor, I make a motion to award the network redundancy to Skyworks at the project amount of $56,918, with the county reimbursing the city for $28,459 of the total project.
Second. I would just add, the construction won't be till June because of the snow and lightning because of our towers, so it'll be midsummer.
What's wrong with you guys, that you can't, they can't get out there and work in the little snow?
Rough it.
Lucero?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Butler?
Yes.
Keel?
Aye.
Archibek?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
All right, you're up again for the 2016 compact excavator bid.
Yes, thank you again, council. The 2016 water fund provides $70,000 for the purchase of a new compact excavator to be used by the water crew for repairs and maintenance. And I would note that this is a new piece of equipment to the fleet, so it's not scheduled to replace anything. Specifications were drawn up and bids were received on February 18th. We received seven requests, responses to our requests. One vendor provided two bids. Bobcat of Durango Bid Number One was $61,945.32. Bobcat of Durango Number Two was $65,975.72. And I won't go through the rest of them there, they kinda fell in behind that. Talking to Public Works, they're requesting that we recommend to city council that they purchase Bid Number Two, which includes plate compactor for compaction. Where Bid Number One did not have that plate compactor in there. So, and it is, again, budgeted in the water fund. It's, Bid Number Two is $4,024.82 below the budgeted amount.
Buying those plate compactors separately exceeds the difference between Bid One and Two?
I'm gonna say yes, but I don't know that specifically.
Be more, because you'd have to get all the additional things to put on.
Any other questions?
We have none, thank you.
May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to award in 2016 compact excavator bid to Bobcat of Durango with the Bid Number Two, includes a plate compactor at the bid amount of $65,975.72.
Second.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Butler?
Yes.
Archibek?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye. 2016 utility vehicle bid.
This bid, we would like to request city council to table till the next meeting. Some issues came up during the day, and we'd like a little more time to review the bids before we present to council. So with your blessings, we'd like to bring it back to you later.
Okay. We don't have to make a motion on that, do we?
I think motion to table.
Do we? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
I would make a motion to table the 2016 utility vehicle bid. Tell future notice?
It would just be the next meeting, so it'd be March 8th.
Second.
Price?
Aye.
Butler?
Yes.
Archibek?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
Fleet maintenance software, Rick.
I'm on a roll here.
Yeah.
This is the Rick Smith one-man show tonight.
He just wants to spend on the money.
I thought I'd get them all done, no. Counsel, the current city fleet maintenance program, as you may know, resides on the AS400s. And as the city has made plans to move off of that platform, we needed to come up with a fleet maintenance program to take care of the city fleet. The Casell software that's recently been purchased does not have a fleet maintenance module in it, and this serves multiple departments. It takes care of, of course, the shop rotary fund, which is the general vehicle facility, as well as the golf maintenance and the park shop for all of their equipment. So this all ties together. We kinda follow the same format the city did with the Casell. We did demos and met with several server, excuse me, software providers last fall. And the overwhelming pick from the departments was the Ron Turley and Associates, which goes by RTA. This is budgeted in the shop rotary fund, $11,500. Plus, we'll be having some training going on for not only golf maintenance and park shop people, as well as Marvin and Vicki to tie that all in. By the way, it also includes the necessary mandatory feed-in from the fueling system so we can be in compliance with the state fueling and all of that, so kinda a big piece of software for us.
Are there any other questions?
I have a question on that, where he states on the proposed amount of $11,000. Proposed amount, not a bid amount?
We went through the same process, Casell.
I said proposed.
That was their pricing, yes.
But the proposed word, does it also mean?
Is that a firm, that's a firm amount?
Firm price, yes.
Okay. Good answer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure it's not surprise there.
Are there any other questions? May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to award the fleet maintenance software to Ron Turley of the Associates, proposed amount of $11,500.
Second.
Butler?
Yes.
Archibek?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye. Okay, the 2016 parks mower bid.
This one I brought reinforcements for. The 2016 equipment fund provides $80,000 for the purchase of a new 10-foot mower to be used in the Parks Department. This is their main production mower for the parks, and it's scheduled to replace Unit 607, which was a 2010 model and had over 4,100 hours on it. We received two bids, Simpson Norton, $75,775.70, and the John Deere that was bid did not meet the specifications. The above amount is $4,224 below the budgeted amount, and the unit is planned out of the equipment fund.
Does council have any questions?
How many pushmowers could we get for $75,000?
How many what?
Pushmowers could we get for...
I was gonna say we can get some electric ones. What are you doing with the old ones? Sell it. Okay.
Ebay. I'm gonna buy it, man, one pass in my backyard.
You could ride it to work, too.
It can be dual-purpose.
We could do the wellness thing, give everybody a push mower, like you're saying.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, Ray, they could probably charge five bucks a person to make a mower along with a push mower.
I don't think they're falling for this.
You need to work, work on your routine.
Moving along, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to award the 2016 parks mower bid to Simpson Norton at the bid amount of $75,775.70.
Second.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Archibek?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Butler?
Yes.
Sheik?
Aye.
Thank you, I'll leave you alone. Are you done?
You're back.
I ended up spending that money.
Mike, ordinance number 1207, series 2016, about the maintenance...
Bringing the ordinance back for first reading and setting for public hearing that we had discussed a couple weeks ago in the draft ordinance section. And basically, we're memorializing the method of measuring distances for marijuana and alcohol licenses, just so we, it's the same way every time. This wasn't really memorialized anywhere, and it just will make it easier for staff, it'll make it easier for the folks looking to try and figure out the distance. They can look and say, okay, this is how it's measured. Upon the unanimous recommendation of several department heads, we got rid of the wheel. They can use the wheel, but they can also use tapes or whatever, because my understanding is the wheel going over a curb or over things, it doesn't always, it bounces. And so I guess you can concur toward a tape, however you wanna do it. So that's the only change from the draft, is we took out the requirement for a wheel. The other thing we had was also another ordinance, which actually is pretty important for alcohol. It waves the distance requirements, one block on each side of the highways, as I recall in town. And that one was always getting forgotten, and for some reason, it was never codified. So Linda suggested that we give it a code, a place in the city code, and so we put that in with alcohol. So staff is recommending passage or approval of these new sections, and that we set them for the public hearing.
Does anybody have a question?
I have none.
All right, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 1207, series 2016, regarding the measurements of distance for liquor license, medical marijuana license, retail marijuana license, and set a public hearing on March 8th, 2016.
Second.
Keel?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Butler?
Yes.
Archibek?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye.
All right, the Montezuma Inspire Coalition Memorandum of Understanding.
Yes, good evening, city council. The Montezuma Inspire Coalition is a group of 18 local entities that have come together as a result of the Great Outdoors Colorado Planning Grant Initiative to influence Coloradans, particularly kids, to appreciate, enjoy, and take care of our great outdoors. I've been participating in local planning meetings since the end of October 2015 to work on solidifying our local coalition, identifying barriers, gaps, and opportunities unique to our community, and implementing a community and youth-driven process that reflects the diversity of the populations to be served. The Montezuma Inspire Coalition has 18 months to complete their planning process and then be eligible for the second round of implementation grant funding, which is not specified on the amount available yet, but the first round of implementation grants will range between $1 to $5 million per pilot community. Implementation grants can be used to build and enhance places close to home to plan and enjoy the outdoors, and in a collect, in a collective of programs to address barriers to reach more kids. The goal is to provide every kid with the opportunity to experience a diversity of outdoor places and activities so they may choose those most meaningful to them. Since families play a pivotal role in youth connections to the outdoors, including them is central to providing meaningful programs and experiences. Finally, GOCO investments will be made to provide youth with opportunities to participate in paid outdoor service learning and stewardship programs and pathways to leadership and career opportunities. And that's, that's why I did a bold face to each one. It's basically those three areas, places, programs, and pathways, is where this implementation grant funding can go. The Montezuma Inspire Coalition Memorandum of Understanding membership requirements are listed on page two of the attached document for your review. I am confident that myself or another representative from the Parks and Recreation Department, if needed, can fulfill the attached membership requirements of the MOU. As a reminder, the city of Cortez has committed $2,000 in our 2016 general fund budget toward a local match for the GOCO Montezuma Inspire Planning Initiative. And just, that was for $75,000. So I guess, any questions on the memorandum of understanding? I just wanted to say, it's been a great opportunity for me to participate with these other entities, and there's certain projects like this, you just don't get the opportunity to network with people, and if anything, that's really gonna help us as a community, I think, down the road. I think there's several people at the table I know I wouldn't have come in contact with had we not had this project.
Right.
Cool.
And I'm assuming that there are, there are a number of entities that will work with the schools so that the program, the kids can be made aware, maybe in a school setting there.
Yeah, well, in fact, that's one of the main thrusts, is that this program will work with the school to incorporate curriculum to, you know, outdoor experiential learning opportunities, and that's a big thrust, from what I can gather of this program, to really connect in with the schools.
Right. Could, could they use some of those grant funds? Dean, let's say, for example, they had a program that they were doing at one of the elementary schools or the high schools, where they could transport the kids from the school to maybe the rec center to participate in a program, or to some of their outdoor area that would be relevant to participating in that activity?
Yeah, I think anything that builds, like you're saying, program capacity, that's, that would fall under the programming element. And so I do think, you know, one of my things, I'll just say upfront, is I've gone through is gonna be about sustainability. You know, I've seen some pretty great grant programs happen, and if you don't really have good forward thinking of how you can sustain them, they're a good thing, like in this case, this is gonna be about a three-year program. You know, it's a great thing for three years, but then after that time. So I really hope we're very diligent and careful about what we initiate, that we can continue a lot of those elements forward after the grant's up.
I compliment you for wanting to think ahead rather than letting it just drop at the end of three years, so I think that's great. Do any other council members have any questions?
I think we have a good program.
May I have, may I have a motion?
Honorable Mayor, I make a motion to authorize you, the mayor of Cortez, to sign the Montezuma Inspire Coalition Memorandum of Understanding on behalf of the city of Cortez.
Second.
Lucero?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Butler?
Yes.
Archibek?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Sheik?
Aye. Okay, Dean, the award of a used passenger...
I think Rick Smith is actually gonna take the lead on this one.
Oh, is he?
He's better suited.
He's gotta take the responsibility, huh? I'll be here.
I'll be here as backup, though.
Okay.
They got me into this thing, so... The 2016 equipment budget provides $55,000 for the purchase of a used passenger van to be used by the Parks Department, or, excuse me, Recreation Department. And this unit is scheduled to replace one of the smaller Ford-type vans. John McHenry and Lyle have been researching dealers, and they came up with this unit out of creative bus sales in Washington State. The proposed unit has 40,987 miles on it, and I've attached a lot of the sheets there so you can get an idea of what they're, they're looking at. The purchase price is $44,950 for the unit, and the staff has requested overhead racks, which would add $1,600, and cloth seat covers for $2,441, plus a labor of $500 to install it. So the price of the unit, all decked out, is $49,491. I heard yesterday, or did Friday, that Lyle had also contacted the dealer back, and he offered an additional $1,000 off?
Yeah.
Since the memo's been written, so... Since the memo's been written, so the actual award would be forty-eight thousand four ninety-one. And there again, it's about fifty-five hundred dollars, now sixty-five hundred dollars below the budgeted amount. The unit is in Washington State, and I would recommend that, that Lyle go out there and inspect the unit before we actually take possession, since, after all, it is used. We feel pretty confident that it is a good unit, but this gives the city one more check and balance before we bring it home, and he would drive it, drive it back.
Is this the one that's, excuse me, the Northwest Bus Sale Incorporated? Because I have, I have pictures of like, three different ones.
We were trying to give you comparables, what that was.
So the one with two thousand three hundred and thirty-three miles on it, that's roughly, well, forty-eight thousand now, so eight thousand dollars more? It's the very first picture?
That's a comparable.
Oh, okay, that's not an actual one that's for sale.
The actual one is, is the, one has Creative Bus Sales in the picture.
Because this one's, up top, it says Woodland Park. It's the Starcraft All-Star twenty-five foot near Woodland Park, Colorado?
That's just a compare, comparable. The, the last few pictures, the one that have Creative Bus Sales in there, that's the actual unit.
How does a warranty work on a used bus like this?
Lyle, do you know what? What'd they offer as far as warranty on the used vehicle, on the used bus? The warranty upon it?
There wouldn't be a warranty.
It'd be as is, so it's usual for a used vehicle.
How is, how is that for miles on something like this? Is that relatively low miles, is it?
What's the mileage life expectancy, though? I mean, is there? You know, assuming it's getting good care, which it would.
The expectancy of it would be, would depend on how good we take care of it.
Well, I'm, I'm assuming you're going to be taking very good care of it.
Borrowing any catastrophic figure, a couple hundred thousand.
Okay, okay.
You know, a hundred and fifty, reasonably.
Well, I just didn't know whether, I mean, it's, it's already got forty-five thousand on it now. I didn't know how much more life it had, and then-
At least another hundred thousand, if not more.
Okay, okay.
Forty-sixteen with forty thousand miles already.
Pardon?
A twenty-sixteen with the forty, forty thousand?
Two thousand twelve.
Two thousand twelve, that's what I was looking for.
And it's actually got, what, forty-five thousand miles on it?
Forty.
Forty-four thousand, something?
About forty thousand.
Forty thousand.
You don't need a special license for this, do you?
Yeah, I got a speeding over passing vehicles.
Oh, God, so I thought it was. But I wasn't positive, I was going to say it first, in case that was wrong.
And that's what I want, I wanted to mention, too, with the Joy McHenry's position, the rec supervisor, we are updating her job description to require a CDL, so we're taking that into, you know, account, that driving a bigger, from going from a van to this bus, that we're accounting for that in the position.
Is there any money in the old one? Like, is that something that we could sell?
Well, I think we're looking at auctioning off the old police van. And we would still keep the, the rec van, I think, that seats around, I think around twelve, isn't it around twelve? Eleven, twelve people, the smaller van?
Eleven.
Eleven, eleven passengers. So that one, we would still keep that one as well. And one of the main things is, like, for example, playground days, we have up to fifty kids, and by the time they bus them from point A to point B, you're taking, and if you're including some staff people to help chaperone, you know, it's quite, quite several different loads that'll, this'll help, so we don't have to have as many, have as many loads to transport, so. And then also, too, like, for our senior trips, we have, you know, capacity up to like, you know, fourteen, possibly fifteen, and so we have to cap that unless we take a second van. And so this will give us up to twenty-five passengers for those senior trips, too, to, to have more people attend those.
Any other, any other questions?
So as, as far as you go, I mean, it's a good purchase, like, you know, given the miles, price, distance to go get it and back, oh.
I don't think we're going wrong with it.
Right.
Right, and that's why the, the final caveat of sending Lyle there, I think they had quoted, like, eighteen hundred dollars to ship, and we thought, well, shoot, I don't want to get it to Colorado, and then really see that it's a dog. So we figured, you know, we'll, we'll fly him out portage, if there is anything that's a third-class flight that we could find, and I'm kidding. Yeah, so we'll fly him out, he can inspect it before, you know. Lyle's exceptionally good with mechanics and stuff, so I, I trust him implicitly to inspect it, and we'll go out and do that. And then, if so, he and Joy can have a crazy adventure, and make sure that Vegas isn't on the route back, and we should be just fine.
Are seat belts included in this? The only reason I'm asking is I know they've changed some of the, they do have, okay.
It's a black belt, and it's older.
Okay, yeah, okay, okay. All right, are there any other questions?
I have none, thanks, I appreciate it.
May I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to award the twenty sixteen used passenger bus purchase to Creative Bus Sales at the price of forty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-one, which includes the requested add-on overhead rack and seat covers.
Second.
Archibek?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Butler?
Yes.
Keel?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Sheen?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
All right, Dean.
I will actually be presenting on this one. Okay, the Parks and Recreation Department bid out for thermal pool covers for the municipal outdoor pool, swimming pool, to replace the existing pool covers, which are over ten years old, and have been slowly falling apart, leaving debris in the pool, and not insulating the pool water, as well as newer pool covers. The pool cover reels were also bid out as an afterthought beyond the budget process, but the additional amount for them was over the budgeted amount. The three pool cover reels will not be considered this evening, and will need to be budgeted for in the coming years. The pool cover bids were opened on Wednesday, February seventeenth, with six bids submitted, and the lowest bidder being Recreonics Incorporated out of Louisville, Kentucky, with a bid of fourteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and six cents. The thermal pool cover bid was seven thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents, under the budgeted amount of twenty-two thousand from the general fund budget. The thermal pool covers have a five-year warranty period.
Is, is there any potential for damage by not having the, the, the pool?
The reels are?
Right.
Well, the reels are, are still functioning, they're, they, they are getting towards the end of their life cycle, but it was just a thought, if we had the room and the, and the budget to do both, we would try, but the, the reels are still functionable.
Okay, fine.
And, and it's just, Dean and I talked a lot about it, and agree that, you know, if there's something that, that the pool staff, whoever wants the reels, then it's something that we should talk about during the budget season-
Right.
-and bring to council. Yeah, I, I, I agree that we should have bid it out to see if we could do both, but this would put us over budget. It's not something that was really planned out, so. And I, I'd rather just have staff be disciplined and really thinking ahead on stuff. So there, there's nothing that would prohibit them for the twenty-seventeen budget to ask council to budget for pool reels, and you can consider that.
Well, I just got to thinking, if it was gonna, if it was gonna create an issue where you might damage the new cover-
No, I, I don't, I don't see that. And, and plus, I look at, too, we have, we will have the Centennial Park restroom project, and if we're fortunate to get the grant the next month on the, the pickleball courts, we, we just have enough bigger projects in, in play that could easily, you know, be off-budget somewhere, and, and it's nice to have a little extra at the start, and start behind.
How do they ship those out? They ought to be, pretty hard to ship all the way from Louisville in that fashion, right? Just on a big pallet, or?
I just think it would be a freight truck to-
I'm just curious about damage to the tarp and, and shipping.
Well, it's a five-year warranty, so if there's any damage, they'll have to replace them.
All right, are there any other questions? Okay, may I have a, a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion to award the twenty sixteen municipal outdoor pool, thermal pool coverage to Recreonics, Inc., at the bid amount of fourteen thousand seven fifty oh six.
Second.
Price?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Butler?
Yes.
Archibek?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Sheen?
Aye.
Shane, the addendum to the new job creation agreement.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. So there are actually three different things we're asking council to consider tonight, all under the neat package of one ordinance. So the, we're, we're asking for an addendum to the original agreement, and I'll go through that a little, in a little bit more detail. Whereas for revised project deadlines, because as we've worked with Osprey, and they've worked with their design team, we've got some revised deadlines. And then the third thing is, is actually an offer for the Fifth Acre. You'll recall with the original agreement, we agreed to hold the Fifth Acre in reserve for the next decade, and they've just made us a cash offer for that. So, starting with the addendum, I think it's, it's really just, I'd say it's a lot of clarification to things. It is, Osprey sat down and really looked at the agreement and thought about it a little bit more. So the first part is, our current agreement says that they give credit for any employees hired after January thirty-first, they've asked that that be January first, just because it's easier to track from year to year, which is fine, because nobody's been hired between January first and January thirty-first that would have qualified anyway, so we're not giving up anything in tracking. The second part of that is, they've asked that they hire somebody, so right now, they have to hire, they give credit if they hire somebody that pays the average Montezuma County wage, which is about thirty-four thousand a year. Scenario that they've asked is, well, if we hire Jim Price tomorrow, and, and so he's in, he's a new employee, we created a new position, and we pay him thirty thousand a year, but two years later, because of merit increases and other hard work for him, and he's now making thirty-six thousand a year, qualifies for this, could we count him at that point? And so, the change to the, with the addendum would say, if you meet all the other criteria, you've been hired after this went into effect, and you work at the headquarters facility, or you work the progress circle, but you're a, you're a Cortez employee, once you meet that, that wage threshold, then we would credit that five thousand dollars. So, again, it's a little takeoff, I don't think that this is going to apply to a lot of their employees, because I think a lot of their employees would start out above that wage. But they did ask that question, so that'd be a change to the addendum. Second part of this is, you know, it was really good in early negotiations with Osprey, how important fiber was, I mean, it came out right away, that it was an absolute deal breaker for them, that they have high-speed fiber. With our initial discussions, we thought that it was going to be two strands of fiber. They've actually done the analysis with their IT team, and know that they need six strands. And so the agreement just says, we'll have six strands for you. And, and I've worked, Rick Smith's been working on it, we are looking at the size of fiber that we bring in there, but we'll be able to accommodate that.
And logistically, Shane, that doesn't impede anything that we can proceed in the future, for example, the new hospital-
No, it's actually-
Possibly more infrastructure going, or-
That's right, we're, we're actually sizing it for those kinds of things as well. So, you know, again, Osprey is in the, the only interest on that line. And we do know that the new hospital is going to need fiber, we do know that the courthouse is going to need fiber, so, yeah, so, so we're, we're trying to size that appropriately, and we're looking at that through our design. But certainly, at this point, now's the time for us to say, yeah, we can dedicate six strands, because we haven't built it yet. The second we hang it, it's kind of, we can't hang anymore.
Right.
So Rick Smith is working on that design, and we're really trying to size it right.
Does that give them a little more upfront than what they actually will leave when they start, but it will look towards the future for their needs?
I, I, I would just, well, Dave Dunn's here, he could answer that. I believe that they're, they believe that they've got capacity with six strands. So we'll, we'll have a twenty-four strand to that, that is plumbed into the building, they're going to light up six. So if we have, if they need more capacity in the future, if we haven't leased it out, we may have it there, but like you say, Ty, but given the other needs on that line, we may not have it. So that's going to be just kind of their business decision, as far as how much they want to lease from the city. But, so, that, that's basically the addendum. The, the third thing I'd like to highlight is just, when we had, did the, we did the original agreement, we agreed to sell the four acres for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in credit back with job creation. So that means that we valued each acre fifty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. They've just made the city a cash offer for fifty-six two fifty, so we already established the price. They didn't want to roll it into the job creation, because I think it, promising forty-five new jobs is maybe stressful enough for them, so they're, you know, so they've just offered cash at, at the price that we've already established previously, which we're asking that the council, or recommending the council accept. And then, the final thing is the expected project deadlines, you all have a table setting here. So this is slightly different than the one that was in your packet, in that when Osprey looked at this, and they met with their design team, they didn't think that they could meet the deadlines for our planning and zoning commission in this middle. So they basically just pushed back the dates of when things happen. I've talked to the city planner, I've talked to the director of planning and building, and I've talked to the public works director, so basically, everybody who's really affected by these timelines, and, and everybody on the staff is comfortable that the city's response to this, our timelines, we're comfortable with that. And so, Osprey's looked at it, they've already signed it, so we're just also recommending that council, authorized the mayor to sign this, and this is all being accomplished through the ordinance, because it was originally run by an ordinance, and so Mike drafted up a new ordinance, and so it authorized the sale, and the addendum, and the expected project deadlines. So that's, that's, and this is just a first reading on that ordinance, but-
All right, are there any- Any questions?
Have you answered it all?
Yeah, I have no other ones. Thank you for compartmentalizing this and pairing it into one.
All right, may I have a motion, please?
I made a good motion, adopted the first reading, set a public hearing on March eighth, twenty sixteen, ordinance number twelve oh eight, series twenty sixteen. An amendment, an agreement approved by ordinance number twelve oh four, series twenty sixteen, and sale real estate located Block Three of Montezuma County Public Facility PUD Development, and approved the amendment to the City of Cortez, new job creations incentive with Osprey Packs, Inc., with the revised except for one project deadlines.
Second.
Butler?
Yes.
Keel?
Aye.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Lucero?
Aye.
Archibek?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Sheen?
Aye.
All right, resolution number six, series twenty sixteen, Niva. Thank you, Shane. Are you still awake?
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors, and Mr. Price, nice sweater.
Yeah, you guys call each other?
We missed the memo.
Yes.
Um, today I'd like to present a review for a plat amendment. The City of Cortez reviewed an application for a plat amendment to consolidate lots eleven and twelve of the Montezuma Hospital Planned Unit Development, submitted by the Montezuma Hospital District. The two lots are on the corner of Cottonwood Street and Dr. Johnson Drive. The applicant is proposing to vacate the lot line between lots eleven and twelve, resulting in one consolidated lot to be named eleven A. In their current state, the lots are just over half and- In their current state, the lots are just over a half an acre. Lot 11A will result in 1.05 acres. Existing utility easements are found on the north, south, and eastern boundaries of lot 11A. Under the Land Use Code, amended plats are found under section 6.09. This replat meets the criteria of number nine of that section, to relocate or vacate one or more lot lines in adjacent lots. The applicant has asserted that lot 11 and 12 are too small to build on due to the size of the structure intended for the lots. The proposed amended plat does meet the rest of the requirements found under section 6.09. The amended plat was sent out to various city staff and relevant agencies, and there were no substantial comments received. One issue in this plat was that it's been, the Montezuma Hospital District PUD has been amended several times. In the last amendment in 2008, the plat reduced the southern utility boundary from 40 feet to 25 feet. However, the adopted city process for that was not followed, so we'd like to clean up the paperwork, and staff would like to note the applicant will have to revise the plat to reflect that they're vacating the easement. And one condition of approval will be that the applicant will complete the easement vacation following the City of Cortez Land Use Code, Chapter 6, Section 6.25, vacation of rights away in easements, to officially reduce the southern utility easement from 40 feet to 25 feet prior to recording the plat.
She didn't take a breath.
Well, when you get on a roll, you know, you just... Council, does anybody have any questions about this?
I just had one quick question here. When you're talking about those easements, that they have to go back to, back from whatever, even if they got replatted, replatted, and replatted and approved, it doesn't, they still have to go back and...
Well, basically what had happened is, it was always 40 feet, and every time council reviewed it, it was 40 feet. And somehow, it was approved at 40 feet with another application. When we get the Mylar, it's 25 feet. And so, the planning staff at that time, that's really what planning staff is supposed to review, is make sure what council approved is in there. It was missed, and it said 25 feet, but we haven't properly vacated that. So, we hadn't done that. Everything that was presented to council and planning and zoning was always 40 feet. And so, there was a mistake, because what got recorded was 25 feet, but it's actually a 40-foot utility easement, so...
So, the ordinance had the 40 feet, and the plat had the 25 feet?
Yes.
Right, that's right.
I just want to make sure I have it straight.
Yeah, so it was basically, it doesn't, there's no grandfathering. I mean, it was an administrative mistake, but we haven't actually done the right steps to reduce that.
I just want to make sure I've read it right.
If I misstated that, I mean, that's...
No, that's correct. And doing the official vacation of the easement will just clean this up, and it will not be an issue again.
Not just for this property, for, is it possible to have this clean up future issues as well, or is this going to be a case by case?
This issue is specific to this property.
So this might be something that we see again, and we'll just have to address it in the same fashion?
Right, you could see where there was a mistake in what was recorded versus what was approved, and we would have to fix it new chances.
So it doesn't affect anything? I mean, if you were, if the normal easement was 40 feet, and now you're reducing it to 25, that doesn't create a problem?
Well, and that's why we need to go through the normal steps to notify all the other utilities and say, does this create any problems for you? I mean, that's why we have processes in place.
Oh, okay, so that's what we're doing right now? We're just asking if there's a, there's a going to be a problem with that?
That's right, yeah, that'd be part of our process.
And so if there is a problem, then it goes back to the 40?
Well, it would just be, geez, if we had utilities say, we can't live with 25 feet for X, Y, or Z, it may, we may say, we don't have to be reducing it to 40 feet, because Empire needs it, or the San District, whoever else, so...
Right, and we have the site plan for this lot already from the Montezuma Hospital District, and there will be very little change in the building if the easement stays at 40 feet.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions?
I have no, thank you.
Yes, thank you, may I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to approve resolution number 6, series 2016, amended plat of lots 11 and 12 of the second amended plat of Montezuma County Hospital District Planned Unit Development.
McLaughlin?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Butler?
Yes.
Lucero?
Aye.
Archibek?
Aye.
Shee? All right, thank you very much. We don't have any draft resolutions, other items of business. Is there a citizen out there that would like to talk to council? Since it's all city staff, almost. All right, seeing none. There's no city attorney's report, no city manager's report, or is there?
No, Your Honor. And I may in the future, I ask Linda to just start putting like possible reports, I'm not...
Or just question marks?
I'm not out of the loop, but not tonight, Your Honor.
Okay. Yeah, twice, we're done. Are there any city council committee reports?
I don't have one.
Me either. So moving right along?
Did you want to report on the mayor-manager meeting?
Aye, I'm good. Oh, oh, yes.
Were you there?
It wasn't that important.
Oh, she was.
Which mayor-manager meeting are you talking about?
About the mayor-manager commissioner meeting.
Oh, yes, okay, yes, I'll be part of that. I've slept since then, Shane. We met with Mankas, the commissioners and the city managers, and so we met, really interesting presentation, Casey, and I can't remember Casey's last name, he, he's the one that oversees the Four Corners Recycling Project, and they are looking at about eight more months of solvency. The project is, the recycling is just, the market is down right now, and so the cost, the income that they can generate from sending these materials for recycling is not bringing them in enough revenue. Additionally, costing them to have Baker Sanitation provides in Dolores, and Mankas is providing some big containers. But unfortunately, lots of times they're not big enough, and people put other, you know, non-recyclable material in them. So it's, it really is becoming an issue, and they're trying to figure out how they can continue to maintain the project with a lot of things on the table that make it very difficult for them to be able to do so. Apparently, there's some legislation that was enacted a while back that stated that all recycling entities had to dispose of all of their commodities by the end of the year.
Seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent. So what was happening was that a lot of these purchasers of these commodities would wait until the end of the year, didn't want to buy anything until they knew that the recycling businesses had to get rid of them. And then, you know, supply and demand, well, there's such a, you know, there's an excess flood on the market, so now we don't have to pay you very much. So that's created some issues for them, as well as other recyclers. The city is going about $100,000 in the whole recycling, is that? And when I say in the whole, I mean it's...
That's about right. And again, everybody kept on bringing up how much they wish they could have the program like the city has, which is just running it through our refuse department. So, we viewed, I think, that recycling is just a part of our refuse service, it just doesn't generate any money for the city. And I think your number's right, Karen. I think that it costs about $125,000, $130,000 a year. We get about $30,000 back in commodity sales, so it's probably a $100,000 drag on refuse. But it's also, you know, I look at, I'm a trash customer, and I just look at recycling as something that I'm paying for. So, you know, and since we've gone number one in number two plastics, demand for curbside services really jumped up. We've had a lot of people who've signed up for that. So, I think as we have more residents utilizing that and seeing that value, we heard the quote, that Baker charges $13 for a curbside container. So, if you, $13 a month, I'm sorry. So if you want to have curbside recycling, you pay $13 to Baker. If you want it in the city, you don't pay us anymore. It's $19 for the whole service for trash and recycling. So, I think we're still offering great value to our citizens, you know. But yeah, it costs the refuges about $100,000 a year.
Well, the thing that's interesting, I think when you live in a city that provides that service, you take it for granted. People in Dolores and Mankas, they have to contract for their own trash pickup. And as we learned on Monday, some people choose not to and just dispose of their trash other places. So, it makes it really difficult for these smaller towns to be able to figure out some way to be able to help subsidize even in a small way, not only, not only recycling, but trash, because they can't, they can't mandate that, you know, you live in the city, and so you're, they're going to take the service.
So when they pay for it, they're going to have to pay for it out of their general fund?
That's right. And, you know, when you have a small budget, it's stretched to begin with. So that was really interesting. We did have a conversation about the Trail to Mesa Verde, and I can't remember whether it came up at workshop or not, but the commissioners seem to still be on board, they're wanting to support that. One of the things that was interesting, Shane and I were both at a Rotary meeting on Monday, and Red Bench brought an article that he had pulled offline about how much tourism is generated by having recreational facilities available, particularly in rural areas. And, you know, although these aren't things that we necessarily charge for, where there's a cost of admission, having things that people want to come and utilize, whether it be a Phil's World or a Trail to Mesa Verde, that people come for those things, and when they come, they eat meals, and they buy gas, and they stay in hotels. And so, it may not be real evident up front, but there is a significance sometimes to having those kinds of things, as well as the fact that it would be, it's going to be a wonderful addition for members of our community. So we talked about that, and...
Talked about the BLM Master Leasing Plan.
Yeah.
Kind of gets the feedback from the commissioners on their stance on...
Surprise, surprise, in case you didn't know, they're, they don't think that a master leasing plan is really, it's kind of superlative, they already feel that there's something in place that addresses that.
We talked about fiber. The county is getting ready to basically do an engineering study to determine what a fiber layout could look like countywide. They're talking to the same firm, and they actually awarded it this afternoon to the same firm that the city used a few years ago. So, that design would include, I think Toyac would include the towns of DeWors and May, because basically, everybody but Cortez, we've already got our design. And then, the commissioners are asking those two communities, Mankas and Dolores, to pay their fair share of that study, at $6.50 per home pass. So they were just kind of saying, look, we're getting ready to award this, we're going to do the design for the whole county. So fiber continues to move forward. Rick has been, right now, the city's part of the partnership has been just giving them Rick's brain in his know-how and having him at the meeting.
Here's where our lines are, please.
Well, and just, you know, Rick is, you know, clearly, he knows more about fiber than really almost anybody should know about fiber. So he's been meeting with them and lending his time. But we're going to continue to work with the counties. To some point, you know, if this becomes a reality, you know, having a shared coalition, co-locate would be big. The way we purchase upstream and sell that could be big. And quite frankly, the idea that we floated around the other day, you know, when I was in Chaffee County, they had a 1% sales tax that the county collected and shared back with the municipalities. And if you look at that as a model, because the commissioners were talking about some kind of funding for fiber, and I think like if you looked at a 1% countywide sales tax that had a shareback with the municipalities, if we had a funding stream in place to pay for something like that, then all of a sudden, when we run the numbers and council looks and says, says, geez, if we did fiber, would this thing really pay for itself? Would we be hanging out there? If we had a dedicated funding stream, that wouldn't matter. We could just do it, really have some seed money to really lay this and look at it from a countywide standpoint. So we broached that, now that, you know, clearly there would be a lot of work between now and then, but as the county is looking at different ways to fund something like fiber, I think that we want to be at the table and have those discussions with them.
Sure.
So, and was that everything?
Oh, they talked something about highways and bridges, some kind of funding that was available.
Oh, oh, well, yeah, there's an off-systems bridge fund, and it's federal money that comes through CDOT, and if you qualify, if you get on the list after doing an engineering study, you can get 80% of the funding. But that other 22%, because you end up having to pay the administration, so it's 22% for Mankas, it's like $300,000, which might as well be $300 billion, because it's, you know, a big number to them. So, yeah, just talked about, you know, funding infrastructure. So, you know, it's all relative, but honestly, being in a larger place that has money, you know, we have big things like that, we can say, okay, we're not going to do anything else, we're going to just pay for our bridge this year. When it's Mankas, it's like, you know, geez, we need to get another grant and not do anything for five years.
Down the city, because we can't do anything else.
Yeah, it's, it can be really hard, and the bridge in Mankas costs just as much as the bridge in a big city, so it's a big deal.
The recycling, you know, I see glass, obviously, you know, sands fairly ubiquitous, but...
Right.
The other recyclables, do they meet the same criteria for why it's hard to move them? And what I mean by that is, from an economic level, supply and demand, do they all fall under the same category that there's such a glut in plastics, glass, aluminum?
Well, I think that, you know, really...
Or is it just that you have to bundle everything to the point where, to make it profitable for you to transport it to a place becomes a little bit harder?
Transportation for us is a big deal, Ty, and really, it's just, you know, they do, you know, when China was growing more, and they had such a demand, we were sending a lot of our recyclables overseas, and there's a higher demand, and so, you know, it's all a commodity market, so it will fluctuate, and sometimes there's a higher demand for cardboard. Our steel is pretty easy to make, the bell salvage, so steel is more constant. But, you know, and I'm sorry, I know I've told you a few of this before, but the best cooperative recycling model I've ever been involved with was in the Upper Arkansas COG, and the COG covered from the city of Leadville all the way to the city of Pueblo West. And so, that whole stretch, I think there were 13 municipalities, counties in that stretch. And in Fremont County, there was a place that took fiber pulp and made it into insulation. And so they had a huge demand for newspaper, I mean, the most they could get. And so, everybody in that region, we'd ship them our newspaper, and they paid such a premium for it, we basically cash filled the whole program. But it was just because we had somebody really close that really wanted that. And I think that's the key to really successful, is just having that, you know, if we had somebody who was making an asphalt that needed a lot of glass, and could really just, you know, we need tons of glass, all of a sudden, we'd find, oh, geez, our glass recycling has gone up. When we're boxing it up and shipping it to Grand Junction, or Denver, or Santa Fe, or wherever it needs to go, between that transport and the bundle and everything else, it just becomes a dog for us.
And one of the, I talked to a private recycler, and he says you have to be able to store it and sell it when the prices are right, and we don't have a lot of storage.
Yeah, that was my next question, would it be us to try to store it, but where are we going to store it?
And it's like the paper has to be dry, it can't get wet. And so, that was, there's a lot of factors that the county and the coalition were trying to reach with storage and bailing and all that. And the amounts were just so great, they don't have the facility to do it.
And for the city specifically, we can, with the new industrial park area and what we've added on to public works, that was the biggest impetus for us to hold off on doing one and two plastics, was really not having the space to store it. And so now, we've kind of broached into that and designated the space. So I think that we can look internally, at least, playing the commodities a little bit smarter and waiting for those prices to go up. But it's not like we can sit on them forever, you know, but we can, we have a little bit of flexibility with our space now to do that.
All right. The report on the workshop, we had a nice presentation from Dean Ponquist on Parks and Recreation Programs. The CLIF program, which the city is going to be implementing, where they will provide an incentive for businesses that would like to spruce up their curb appeal, up to $1,000 in matching funds. There's an application process. We talked about tree replacement in addition in the city itself. Parks and Rec has put out a survey, it's both online and hard copies are available at the rec center to get feedback from citizens in the community as to what direction they'd like to see Parks and Rec take and possible program offerings. He talked about finishing up a pre-construction document to present to the Corps of Engineers for mitigation of the Gier Wetlands Project. They are in the process of developing a job description and setting up interviews to hire somebody who will be overseeing, become a recreation facility supervisor. And we're looking at, they're looking at a supplemental agreement with, for limited use between Durango residents and Cortez residents. So if somebody from Durango wants to come over and use our rec facility, they can pay a little extra on their fee in Durango and have so many passes to be able to use our facility, and it will be reciprocated for Cortez residents as well. And they also are in the process of getting some roofing quotes. Hallelujah, before we get more snow, hopefully. Mitchell Toms came to visit with us about purchasing a lot on Driscoll Street and gave us a little bit of information on that. And then we adjourned for executive session to discuss purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, et cetera, of land. So that pretty much took up all of our, all of our meeting. Before I adjourn, I would just like to remind council that the library, in cooperation with the Sunflower Theater, will be airing on the 14th of March, Cartel Land. It's a documentary, it's been nominated for an Academy Award, and it's about, obviously, the cartels. And it's supposed to be very, very good. So if you have a chance, it starts at seven. They ask for a $5 donation. It's fun, it's fun to get to go to those, they've done a nice job.
It's a great documentary. It's actually, it centers around vigilantes standing up to the cartels.
Have you seen it?
I have, it's great.
So...
Tell me about it.
Go, go and support your library.
I'm going to.
Does anybody else have anything for the good of the city?
Reminder that Soups of the World's coming up.
Oh, that's right.
March 5th, I believe, right?
Pretty soon, yes, yes. And that's a fundraiser for the bridge that the Episcopal Church participates in, that's all. Okay, well, good.